Good morning, everybody. It's eight thirty. We'll call this morning's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order for Tuesday, September ninth. Our first item is the approval of the agenda, and we do have an agenda addition, which is a closed session for board discussion regarding attorney-client privilege. And we will put that under, right after committee reports.
Mr. Chair.
I move the agenda as amended.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. Citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard that is not on the agenda? There's none in the audience?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Nothing online. All right. We'll move then to approval of bills and vouchers.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to pay the bills and vouchers.
Second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Baer, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. Minutes from August twenty-sixth.
Would you approve the minutes, the hours twenty-sixth?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kravenhoff, then second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carried. Our eight thirty-five item is a Clay County Extension new employee introduction. Make sure your microphones are green there, and you're in good shape.
Nice to meet you all. I'm Amelia Lansford. I'm the new four-H extension educator over in the office right next door for Clay County. A teeny bit about my background. I went to Concordia College over in Morehead, so I was staying pretty close. Got a degree in biology, Bachelor of Arts, and then I worked at NDSU before this, at their wellness center, doing student employment and marketing. And I'm pursuing my Master's in Natural Resource Management degree. I've also previously worked with Extension, doing crop scouting, so not exactly what I'm doing now, but still a little bit of Extension work. In this role, I've had about three months, I think, now of experience, so still a little bit new, obviously, that's why I'm here. But the first month was very focused on the fair, so had the opportunity to learn how all of that works, and also meet a lot of four-H families, including Jenny's family, and all of her. Don't apologize for that. But yeah, I got the chance to meet a lot of good people there, and I'm excited to continue meeting, getting to know other four-H families as I continue in the role. Moving past the fair, I've gotten the chance to get started with onboarding and all of that good stuff, and been able to execute some summer programming. We had three summer programs this summer, where we reached forty different youth in three different school districts, so Holly, Yulin, and Barnesville, where we taught about birds and worms, so covering that natural resources and wildlife biology project area, very STEM-focused. I obviously have a biology degree, so that makes sense why I'd be moving forward with a lot of STEM work there. I'm also planning our volunteer and officer training on November eighteenth, so that will be just a time for volunteers to prepare and youth officers to prepare to succeed in their roles with the new four-H year coming up so soon, and just providing support for the program there. The next six to nine months, I have a few different things planned in the works. I've been able to connect with DGF and Morehead schools about after-school programming in their school districts for this upcoming year, hopefully starting in November and January, kind of depending on the length that that school district would like to have going on. The STEM programming will be done with grades one through four, three through five, and five through eight, again depending on those needs of those districts. And we plan to reach about eighty youth over the span of four to six months, depending on that start date. The goal is repeat exposure to four-H and hands-on STEM experience, and just exposure to things that excite them and get them feeling fulfilled in different areas and ideas. Our Green Team is something that I worked with over the county fair, and I hope to expand on this by establishing a county ambassador program. So this program, the Green Team program, aims to give youth a chance to take ownership roles and pride in the program that we have here by planning events and having those leadership roles. So expanding on this, the year-long youth leadership program would have the goal of equipping youth with the skills to be leaders in their communities and be prepared as they go out into the world. My aim would be to have youth take that same kind of pride with the Green Team into the community to broaden the impacts of the program for four-H members and community members at the same time. I have a meeting scheduled within the next week with another local educator who has been able to establish a county ambassador program in her own county, so hopefully that will give me the tools to move forward with this goal. So, other than that, just continuing learning, onboarding, and training, and obviously getting to know all of you and everyone who I'm working with. So, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you for the update. We were really excited to invite Amelia to the board to introduce herself and talk about the goal areas that we're hoping to expand the capacity with our county extension office. Amelia, one thing you likely don't know is that I was a Clay County Ambassador with Commissioner Campbell's son, and that was a really important time in my life, and I think it was really beneficial, so I'm excited for how this work can benefit young people in our community as well. So thanks for coming to the board, and thanks for being part of the team.
Thanks for having me.
Yeah. Anybody else have a? Did you mention that you, I know you talked about the after-school programming. Is that where you said you're working with eighty students, or is that?
Yes, eighty to a hundred, depending on how many schools we're reaching with Morehead, just because capacity, depending on that. So if it's like, I think there's five total schools, so just depending on that.
Very good. All right, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a request for approval for a repurchase of tax-forfeited property. And Karen, is Karen here? Is she gonna be online? Okay.
Just signing in.
We're getting somewhere. What's that? Okay, why don't you? All right, why don't we, we'll come back to item number three, and let's move on then to item number four, and that's a request approval to hire an engineering technician, senior engineering technician.
Yes, good morning. So we do have an opening for an engineering tech, or senior engineering tech, that will be due to a recent resignation. So this is a really important position that watch, they're kind of the eyes out on construction projects, and they really keep track of all our quantities and make sure a project's coming on budget after its bid. I would look to hire right away, just 'cause that position kind of meant, like, countywide, a bunch of different counties are struggling to fill that position, so it's good to open it right away.
So Justin, when you say, is it an engineering technician or a senior engineering technician? So if we were to hire a, would you, might you have somebody in-house that would be qualified to move up to the senior engineer?
Nope.
Okay, so this would be an outside position?
Correct.
So there'd be no backfill needed, then?
Nope.
Okay.
And the difference between an engineering tech or a senior engineering tech is just based on the certification that you need from MNDOT, and then years of experience, so.
Okay. Any other questions of Justin?
I make a motion to approve the hiring of an engineering technician or a senior engineering technician.
Second.
Second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Kravenhoff, and second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion on the motion? So if you were to hire just a, and I don't mean just, but if you were to hire the engineering technician, does that mean you would have no senior?
No. So currently, we have, we have four senior engineering technicians and one engineering technician. So we are losing a senior, so we still would have three of them.
Okay.
One other question.
Yes, Commissioner Baer.
To become a senior, you said they have to be certified in more things?
Yep.
Do we, do we put them through that to get them certified, so they all become seniors?
Yes. So all the senior techs that we have now once started as an engineering tech and were promoted.
All right. Good. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. All right, Justin, thank you.
Thank you.
Any luck yet, Sarah? All right. All right. Then next, we will then move into item number five, a request approval to release a request for proposal for disability employment services. Quinn and Holly, good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Yes, we are here to request a motion to approve releasing an RFP specific to our lead agency capacity building grant. I am going to turn it over to Holly to tell you all about it and what we're going to do with the RFP.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Today, we're here before you to request to release a RFP, request or seeking applications from our local disability waiver employment services providers. This RFP is looking to contract for an employment specialist who will work alongside social services in increasing competitive integrated employment for people with disabilities. This grant is fully funded through DH, excuse me, this position would be fully funded through a grant with disability services at DHS. It's a lead agency capacity building grant. The purpose of the grant is to provide outreach, education, and system navigation, excuse me, with our local providers, increasing, to increase competitive integrated employment. We'll work collaboratively with our businesses and our employment services providers to increase the competitive integrated employment with, for people with disabilities. The selected applicant would be holding, excuse me, holding individual meetings with our employment service providers and our individuals with disabilities, as well as stream out, excuse me, helping to streamline our employment services. Let's see, the, the grant is fully funding this position through June thirtieth of 2026, and we can expect the grant to continue for another four years.
And again, I just want to speak to the funding piece. This initiative to fully fund the position would be through the grant funds. We don't need any county dollars to do this. This would just be a more creative way to utilize the grant funds that we do have coming in. And with that, we yield for any questions.
Questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Who is, is this individual responsible for any of the ongoing grant application pieces, or who's doing the grant application? Is it Holly?
We've done the grant application. We've been selected.
Got it.
Already selected. If you remember, it was about nine, ten months ago, I think we brought receiving the grant to you all. We've now received those funds, and we're trying to figure out creative ways to utilize the funds that we've received.
Okay. And then, you know, you talk about working with our business community in regards to how we form a model. Is it specific, state-specific businesses? Are we working with North Dakota businesses as well under this grant model, just Minnesota businesses?
We could be working with North Dakota businesses as well, just being a border community. A lot of our individuals with disabilities do find employment in North Dakota, in Fargo.
Okay. I guess I was just wondering if there's more of a priority for our immediate Clay County businesses?
We could certainly have that conversation with the employment specialist. We, a lot of our employment service providers have partnerships with businesses on both sides of the river.
All right.
And so, so this RFP, would we be looking for somebody to, what they'd be going for is through June thirtieth?
The, the grant is through June thirtieth with the potential for it to be extended another four years, which we anticipate it would be.
Yeah. So, but the, whoever was doing this understands that it's only for the time period of the grant?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have any, any other comments, questions? Yes, Commissioner Mojo.
I'll make a motion to approve the release of the RFP for disability employment services.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carried. All right, thank you, Quinn. Thank you, Holly.
Move on to the next one.
Oh, okay. All right, we'll move on to item number six, and that is the budget item review for penetration testing for technology services. Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. The item we're presenting today is just a, one from earlier this year for our 2026 budget request. It's a penetration testing. So what this is, is a request for a company to come up, that we would hire, contract for four to six weeks, that would work on, almost essentially, an ethical hacker or simulated a cyber attack on our network, that would work on trying to penetrate our network and get in and find the issues that are vulnerabilities that we have on our network externally and internally, and give us a report to see if we can, what we can fix, what, what holes we need to patch, things like, things like that. That's the, that's the idea of it. We brought Jocelyn, our subject matter expert here too, to answer any more difficult questions on the matter, if you have any of those. But the, back in June, July, the initial quotes we received, there were two, a couple of them came in. There was a five-year quote, forty thousand dollars annually for five years, and the other one was forty thousand dollars, or forty-five thousand dollars for a one-year penetration testing service. They also have different levels. We can do external only, we can do internal only, we can do a mix of it. It's just, this is the one that just kind of, everything, internal and external, for the five-year. They have a three-year, they have a one-year. This is just what I, what I brought to the table at that time.
Commissioner Kravenoff.
Yeah, well, it sounds like you have choices, so.
We do, yep.
What are you thinking? What do you?
Jocelyn and I have been discussing it a little bit too. So I know we, we talked about, it would be good to have both. We also have a service that we contract through State of Minnesota IT Department right now. They have a threat vulnerability management unit, part of the State of Minnesota IT, that we do have services monthly, then they, they also do a external scan of our network and give us a report on that as well. So we do feel pretty confident, and maybe I shouldn't use the word confident, but we do feel pretty good about our external network. So it'd be more the, the internal, I think that would be the, the most beneficial to our environment.
Commissioner Baer. If, so if we were gonna go just to internal, what would that roughly cost?
I think the breakout was roughly thirty thousand for that, but I, I don't know if that was on a five-year term. I think that was just a one-year thirty thousand, but I could get pricing for that as well.
Then, like, with a, with a five-year term here at forty, would that, they would be doing it every year?
Every year for five years, yep. And the, the idea behind that is, you know, we wouldn't want the same, the same testing every year.
Yep.
Because we'd miss something. So we asked that question when we did the demo and the presentation, is they would rotate staff, they would rotate methods every year, just so they weren't covering the same thing, the same people, the same methods, because they have different staff in-house on these services, just, just so it wasn't, something wasn't missed. You know, they have different ideas, different strategies involved, so that was, that would be the idea, is just yearly, see what's, what's missed, see if somebody else has a new idea to, to try, and hopefully that keeps our security baseline a little bit, a little bit higher each year.
Another question.
Yes.
Are we doing anything right now for internal?
We do have some, you know, without getting into too many details in public forum, but we do have some, some things in place, but not, not quite as detailed as this.
Ryan Jocelyn, do we have, do we know if any other counties in Minnesota have gone to this service?
Yeah, there, there are quite a few, actually. Big Stone County was brave enough, they actually used, one of the companies that we received a quote on, they actually invited a group of us counties to join in on their results meeting, or their findings meeting, which was pretty, pretty bold of them, so I give them props for that, but it was kind of interesting to, to all hear the results at once, and even some of the things they were finding, based on the same kind of, same vendors we all use as counties, and how they can patch it, how they can remediate different things. So it was, it was good, it was valuable.
I guess, this being something new to go into, I, I don't know that I'm interested in a five-year commitment.
Sure.
At this point in time, but if the board is considering to do a one-year deal to see how it works out.
Could you come up with pricing for the internal?
Yeah.
If it's a five, one, three, whatever that price is?
Yeah, I can get you all, I can get you all three of those options.
Yeah, okay.
Show us all the options that they have there.
Yeah.
That's kind of where my head's at, too. And, but I'd like to, it'd be to kind of follow up with Commissioner Campbell's thoughts. The reasoning we would want, what would those advantages be for you, whether it's one or three or five years, other than, you know, maybe you know already, but would that bring in greater, I guess I'm trying to say, does that bring the newest and the cleanest to you, you know, every year? Or you, you mentioned it's not repetitive, but what becomes newer, what becomes beneficial, I guess, for ongoing?
Right. The, kind of the, the other side of that too is, do we look at maybe each year, so if we go with company A, one year, maybe we look at a different company the next year, instead of using the same company, even though the price may be higher, you know, doing just a one-year, no, no contract, maybe it's just having a whole different set of skills, different company come in and.
Yeah. Well, I don't, you know, I'll just speak for me. I don't know enough about this stuff to know what's important and the highest level for you, you know, for your protections.
Right.
But, so you're gonna have to guide us on that.
Right, and that's a little out of our wheelhouse, and that's why we're.
Okay.
Seeking the, the services too.
One other question.
Yes, Commissioner Baer.
So it takes four to six weeks to conduct the testing, and then they come back to you and show you the findings? And then do they give you, this is what we need to fix? And then do you guys fix it, or do they fix it, or?
They would, they would give us recommendations on how to fix it, you know, if it was something a vendor or partner we're working with, they would say, this is what you should do to work with that vendor or that partner. So they would give us the results and say, here's your action plan.
Okay. And then say, go down the line twelve weeks, and you bring in two new vendors, or I don't know if that, if that's what happens in this realm?
Yeah, very well could.
And then, that four, ten weeks ago, does all that is pretty much moot?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
Yep.
Might be.
Yeah, some of it might be, but it might not be, right?
And that's why we, and that's why we request the recurring scans, or the recurring tests to happen again every year, to check, to check for the new technologies and the new things that have been implemented.
Yeah.
I guess if you don't, if you, if you don't know what the problem is.
Have you fixed it?
That's what, yeah, you can't fix it, and that's what this is about. And if you have a new problem two weeks after they're done, you better hope it doesn't bite you till the next round, right?
Yep.
Right.
Gotta love technology.
That's right. Yep.
All right, so you'll come back to us then with some pricing?
Yes, yep, I will do that, absolutely. And I'll try to loop in at least a third vendor too, and maybe try to get, you know, more than just two vendors.
Thank you, Rory.
Yeah, all right, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
A break? Okay, all right, we're gonna take a break.
Thanks, Sarah.
All right, we are back in session. We will move on to, going back to item number three on our agenda, which is a request to approval to Resolution 2025-19 to repurchase tax-forfeited property. And Jackie, I think you're gonna give us a little update on this?
Yep, I'll give you a little briefing. So we have Karen on the line, sorry for the technical difficulties there. So Karen is requesting to repurchase her tax-forfeited home in Holly, Minnesota, at thirteen-twelve Sunset Boulevard. She was due back for her 2021 taxes, and now she wants to repurchase that. I kind of gave a little briefing on the memo of what's owed as far as the delinquent taxes, and then both halves of the 2025, the state deed fee, if it's approved, to get it back into her name, and then deed tax and the recording fee, for a total of twenty-eight-thousand-three-thirty-three, thirty-three. I have also attached, I've been talking to Karen Salberg, or Kay Salberg, sorry, from Valley Premier. And she has, they have her pre-approved for a loan for this. And so all of that stuff is taken, I guess, into consideration, and now Karen, I'll let you speak to the board?
Yes, please. Good morning, Karen.
Okay, good morning. Sorry for the technical difficulties on my end, I think, I have no idea. Anyway, I would like to purchase my taxes back, my home again. My plan has been is to put the, get my house ready to be put back up in the market, and so I can sell it. I've had some sellers, I have had it sold a couple different times, but then there came back that they needed some repairs done to it, and I haven't been able to get some of those repairs, repairs done in a timely manner, so then I just moved on to something different. Part of it is, when I bought the, purchased the home, I purchased it without, with it paid for fully, and my, my intent at that time was, I had supposedly, my brother-in-law, my husband had passed away, and there was some monies that he said, oh yeah, we know, don't worry about it, we will make sure that every month or every year that I would have this extra money so that we can pay for it, but instead of that, I mean, pay for like the taxes on the house, and, you know, the insurance on the house, and insurance for my girl, as that's what my husband and I had previous done with this land, land that they had owned, and it has, he hasn't fulfilled on his end. I just moved, I would, I would prefer to be able to purchase my house again, because like I said, I am in the process of getting it ready to be on the market to get sold.
All right, Karen, we.
And if I was.
Well, go, go ahead.
I said I'm out, so I'm engaged too, and then I am, I will be, I mean, that's my main goal, is to get the house on the market so I can sell, so I can move in with them. Or, you know, when I get, when we get married, that would, that would be the, we're not keeping this house, we're, we're, I'm moving in where he's at.
Okay, so the, we do have some information. We also received a letter from your bank, talking about your prequalifications.
Mm-hmm.
And I, and I noticed that the numbers that we got from the auditor's office totals twenty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. You're aware of those, of that total?
Yes, I am.
And are you aware that that number, that number is, um, good through September 30th?
Yes.
Okay.
And she said that once we get everything going through, that they would, if there's any extras, that they would include those, those amounts too, from what I was told.
Okay. And, yeah, then, then the other thing would be, I, I did notice here that, um, in the, um, the bank information, um, it says, please note that the final approval is not guaranteed and may be subject to additional review. Are we pretty confident there in, in?
According, when I was speaking with you, with, with her, yes. Um, she said she was pretty confident. There's just a few things that they have to get this approval to make sure we get the right amount to go through before they can do the rest of it, the remaining of it. But it sounded pretty confident from her when I, when I spoke with her.
If I can speak to that too.
Yes, yes.
I did talk to Kay, I did talk to Kay at Valley Premier.
Okay.
And a couple of different times, we've been, um, on the phone and emailing. And yes, she did assure me that, yes, she is approved, but she wanted to put the, the four different contingencies just to make sure that, you know, she came to board and all of the different things that she needed to do.
Okay, okay. And so, what, what would happen if there was, if there, sometimes in the banking business, when you're closing on, on loans and properties and that type of thing, that sometimes there ends up being a delay?
If there was a delay and it went into October, the, um, amounts would just vary by a little bit as far as the total on the delinquent taxes, and then it would increase that deed tax amount a little bit. And then, as long as it's by October 15th, then, um, and then the first half of '25 would also go up by a little bit too. You know, there'd be a little bit more of a, um, penalty on there too. So, and she does know that. I think when we had first talked to Karen, we talked through October 15th, but Kay, um, was pretty positive that they could have it all done by the end of September.
Okay, all right. All right, any, any further, uh, comments, questions by the board?
Mr. Chair, I'll only.
Oh, go ahead, Karen.
Go ahead. No, I was just gonna say, I don't have anything that I can think of at the moment.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
I'll offer a motion to approve resolution 2025-19 to repurchase the tax forfeiture property as presented in the packet upon, um, approval of all the other pieces.
I will second that.
All right, we have a, a motion by Commissioner Mojo, seconded by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carried. All right.
Thank you.
Did it cover everything?
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Thanks. Bye.
Bye.
All right, next we have our committee reports, um. Commissioner Eberinger, do you want to start today, or did I start with you last time? Yeah, I thought I did. Okay, Commissioner Eberinger.
Um, on Monday, the 8th, yesterday, uh, myself and, um, Dale Adams, our director for, uh, parole, or probation, Steve, Lori, we all met with Carter De, Deers, who's an assistant commissioner with the Department of Corrections regarding, uh, Mr. Adams' presentation the week before on the, on the additional costs for our, uh, parole service, or probation services. Uh, it was a very informative and somewhat disappointing meeting, but indeed, the new funding mechanisms, uh, that was approved in the last legislature with only partial payment, not full payment. Uh, indeed, it did result in the, in the costs that we had in our meeting last week. There's a couple of things that have been identified, and Commissioner Schnell has been in contact with me, and, uh, he's, he's gonna be made aware of it by, uh, Mr. Deers. But, uh, a couple of the problems that we've got, one is the interstate, uh, transfers of people on probation between other states and our state. There's costs to preparing that, and the state is not distributing those costs at this time statewide. So, when you have border cities like ours, we bear the burden of the costs. Uh, in addition, there is sort of a disincentive to do your job well, right now that's contained in there, and it strikes Clay County very much, uh, to our detriment. If somebody meets the standards that are set for, for a person on probation to stay out and, and meet the accomplishments that are put for them by their probation agent, they can advance to where they are basically taken off of active probation. When that happens here, they are taken off, and it is registered as they have completed probation. I think technically, and, and Ms. Melton, maybe you can correct me on this, technically, they still have to do their time. They, it could be considered they're still on if they get in trouble again. But as far as the Department of Corrections is concerned, they're cleared. A lot of counties don't give these people the opportunity to clear themselves. It's a huge incentive to get that done, and they complete programs, they complete the expectations that are put out by their agent. It's, it's a step towards, um, getting back in society and being productive and not ending up in, as a recidivist. And what happens on this, uh, we take them off when they meet their goals and objectives, and the state stops paying for their, uh, for their probation, or their, their, uh, probation status. Other counties, including some big ones, Hennepin for instance, they don't take them off. They put the file in the, in the drawer and say, stay out of trouble and you won't have to report in every month. But they continue to draw the funds for, uh, the individual. We don't. That, the fact that, what we are doing is what the Department of Corrections wants people to move towards. We have a model program right here in Clay County right now, and it's really functioning well, and people are being served. Uh, unfortunately, the way they've structured it, and it's gonna be addressed, we were assured of this, but it's not gonna be addressed in the, in the formula, uh, for this year or next. It's gotta be something that goes through the legislature. It's gonna be corrected, but at this point, we're losing funding on that. Uh, so, if you've gotta lose money, I guess losing it because you're doing the right thing makes some sense. But we had a, a good meeting, we had a long meeting, and it was discussed. And I've been assured by Commissioner Schnell it's gonna be followed up and addressed. Unfortunately, we're gonna be on the receiving end of this, for this, um, funding year and for next. So, that was.
So, was it, was, was this a, a rule, or was this legislation?
This was, the, the funding structure as set up in legislation, as I understand it, if I correct, Steve?
Correct.
So, you know, it's, it's a, a long process to develop a formula. And we got caught on the short end. You look at the other counties, a great many of them lost a little bit of money, or they gained a little bit of money. Uh, we happen to be an outlier on this due to several circumstances. And, um, something we can discuss during the budget, the only way we're gonna address this is by cuts. And, um, we also talked about, you know, there's, there's three different delivery systems in the state of Minnesota. I think we're best served by the DOC, which is what we've got. Um, you may, some counties have moved to the community, uh, the CCA, um, formula, Otter Tail just did. But if we do that, we've got to take over all responsibility for personnel issues, for training, for incidentals like travel, mileage, all the things that we, they've become our employees, and we would be responsible for all of that. I think we're best served, just from my experience on it, I think we're best served with the DOC model.
Dave, and I, you know, we gotta move on here, but I, what does us being on the border have to do with? You were talking about, what's that, what's that got to do with anything?
There are a number of things that have to go forward when a, when a, uh, person on probation comes into our county or leaves and goes to another state. Person for, on probation comes in from another state here. The cost of those, uh, reports and investigation is basically what it is. The cost of that is not distributed across the whole system. If your county has a lot of those, you've gotta pay for them. It's not a huge amount, but it's, it's, it's a considerable amount when you look at our annual budget. Uh, what the discussion is, as I understand it, is that those costs would either be funded separately within legislation, and it'd be something Department of Corrections would have funding to cover, or it would be distributed across the state and, and basically paid for by all, all counties. So, that's, you know, in trying to pin down, where is this funding, uh, how are we getting hit with this? Those were the answers I got. But there's flaws in the, in the, uh, funding. It was pushed through, and I don't think we scrutinized real well. Steve, am I missing anything here?
I know you did a very good job of explaining our meeting.
One of the things I'm gonna ask everybody to keep in mind, the only way we can limit this is cutting personnel. The reason it's, we have a good system here is because of the agents we have. And one of the reasons it's a little more costly is, we don't have a lot of young agents. We have senior people here that know what they're doing. It's because they wanna work here. And they wanna work in this system, both because of the director they've gotten now and the one they had before. They do it the right way, and the people we've got that really wanna make a difference are the ones that have stayed here a long time. And this is an upstream function. We can pay for this, and it's gonna save us in the long run on what it costs to incarcerate people, what it costs to keep them on parole or probation, um, what it costs us in, in having unemployed people that are conduct, engaged in criminal activity in our county. So, it's, it, it's been effective, and I, I would hate to think that we're gonna lose support because we're short-sighted and we just wanna cut the budget. We have good staff here and it functions well, so. Anyway, we can discuss it on, during budgeting, but I wanted to take a little time to discuss what, what Steve and, and I and the DOC folks have managed to figure out on what happened. Um, later that day, I engaged, or I, I participated in a, uh, phone interview, a survey on the board activities for the Greater Fargo-Moorhead, EDC, that this agency is conducting, and just answer their questions and engage that are gonna do a, uh, external review of, of the board function there. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Krabnikoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On, um, Wednesday, September 3rd, I had the Clay County Collaborative Quarterly Meeting. Uh, reports were given, and overall, um, our revenues, uh, through the state, or the federal funds that come to support this program, those revenues are slightly ahead of projections. So, uh, those are good things, and, uh, of course, we, uh, with our providers we have in the system, we did increase, uh, all the grants this year, so, and all that we're running in a positive way, it's a real plus. So, uh, things are in good shape. Uh, the next morning, on, uh, September 4th, we had the Clay County Intergovernmental Committee Meeting. Uh, we had, and we were joined by, uh, Representative Jim Joy, Senator, uh, Rob Kupac, and Senator Mark Johnson. And, uh, three areas we somewhat talked about were, um, with the unfortunate shooting in, in, uh, in St. Paul, or Minneapolis, excuse me, it's, uh, and enunciation. Um, there, there is reviews going on right now by both, uh, uh, DeWorth, London Felton, and then also Moorhead on their safe school procedures, so the two superintendents talked about those quite a bit. Um, just making sure they're at the high, highest level they should be, uh, protecting our, um, kids. And then, of course, the concerns that were somewhat addressed are, uh, two things were brought up, mental health mostly, and then what, what areas can we keep concentrating to minimize this? And then, of, of course, there, um, there was also some voices about gun laws. So, anyway, those were the, uh, two concerns that kind of popped up. Going back to the schools, there was conversation with the legislators about, um, having some more school flexibility in their, uh, between their capital and operational funds, um, their levis that are having to be, uh, done because they can't move money back and forth. So, that will con, uh, continue to be, um, voiced through legislature, uh, in this next session. They were working on it last, but, um, anyway, so that topic was talked about. Little more, uh, uh, also border city flexibilities. Hoping to, um, last rules a little bit, giving each community a little more, um, flexibility once again, use of, uh, funds, um, because there is a difference between Moorhead and the East Grand Force of their needs. Uh, and then last, uh, part of the discussion was on paid family medical leave. Um, we talked about, just one more, one more time, um, the pressure that program will put on, uh, budgets, and then I reported, uh, which they took interest in, that the private, um, uh, private providers to, um, to take care of those programs were coming lower than the state rates. So, that was at that governmental meeting. Yesterday, I was joined with, uh, Commissioner Baer. We went to the Economic Development Authority meeting, uh, in Moorhead. Um, we had a presentation by deed that, um, I guess is pretty much the second time we've heard it. And, uh, but it was good to hear again. I, I just brought more clarity and, and really what they were just, uh, trying to, uh, bring to the EDA is the fact that the state has programs, uh, whether it's for, uh, this mainly small and medium-sized businesses for business setups, and then also to help with, uh, in their workforce strategies, in their operational size. Um, some small loans, uh, uh, some loans to help them in, in their operations. Uh, last night, I was at the Buffalo Red Watershed District Meeting. On that, uh, just a couple of things, uh, we, um, there were two, uh, cover replacements in Clay County, and also I, um, uh, there's gonna be a bridge replaced. I talked to Jocelyn about that earlier, and, and they'll be working on that. That's down in Barnesville Township. Um, one discussion, um, that came up, I've received calls about, um, Buffalo, um, um, excuse me, log jams starting to occur on the Buffalo River. Uh, that discussion is, um, not quite sure why yet, but appears that it's maybe something, uh, we don't have the facts yet, that things are occurring on the river, and in the old days, it was elms dying out. Now, we start having ash dying out, and perhaps there's just more deadfall. So, anyway, this responsibility, um, you know, really falls on the watershed, but there's no, been no funding source for helping these. But there's, uh, one over in London right now that, um, was brought up that there's gonna be a township bridge taken out and relocated a few feet, and that whole area is stacked full of trees. I mean, and they had a picture of it. So, anyway, there's gonna be, uh, more discussion by the, the board to find out what options are. Um, maybe there's federal funds relying with, maybe DNR to help on some of those, um, those, those log jams. So, anyway, that was, uh, across that meeting last night. That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Mojo.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Last week, I attended the Highway Tracking Committee meeting. We discussed the, uh, right-of-way purchases happening on CASAF 52 for the roundabout project. The five-year plan discussion will have a meeting at the end of September to discuss that. that more. There was a resident concern from Oakport Township that we talked about, and then talked about twenty-six in regards to that road raise, the mill, the overlay pieces, how that could be affected by the data center discussion on the North Dakota side of the river, wanting to make sure we're on top of any of those pieces, the motor grader position that was open, and a letter of support for a project in Holly. I also attended the, a pre-meeting with the mediation discussion that we're talking about with the resource recovery doors, and I also attended the Basin Commission ex officio meeting last week. On Thursday, I participated in the mediation, and then yesterday, I attended the Executive Committee of MetroCog, and that concludes my reports.
Thank you, Commissioner Baer.
I only have one report. I went to the EDA in Morehead, with the Morehead EDA, and we, with Commissioner Krabnikoff, and it was another deed update, and it was, yeah, very eye-opening taking it in the second time, so it's very, that's, that's all I have to report.
All right, thank you. All right, for myself, I had, on September second, we had the Highway Tracking Committee. Commissioner Mojo was reported on that. We did get a, a counteroffer on some, a right-of-way, right-of-way purchase that we felt was in line, and so we, you know, we told Justin that he should try to move forward with that to get that done. And that is in regards to the fifty-two roundabout project. Commissioner Mojo mentioned something about a resident concern regarding a four-way stop on Cassaw one and Cassaw twenty-two, that's Wall Street and Broadway Road for those that, and the resident was requesting that the north-south stop signs be removed, and, or that, that the, yeah, no, the east and west stop signs be removed, and so that would be just to through traffic, and, and of course, those decisions require an awful lot of approval through MINDOT. And I, I don't know that that's the safest thing to do right there with the amount of traffic that, that goes on there, so I think there's probably a couple of times a day, maybe right early in the morning, late at night, where somebody, traffic might build up a little bit there, but it's, it's much safer. And I think that, you talked about the Comstock project, and the curb, pouring with curb was being done, and then I think the paving, so the paving should be this week. And that concludes that one. And then on Thursday, the fourth, we spent the entire day in mediation. Yeah, and more to come on that, but that concludes my report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, I participated in Highway Tracking. Just wanna think, one thing to note in addition to the Commissioner's comments, Justin was asked to serve on the Minnesota County Engineers Legislative Committee, and so I think that, again, is any opportunity that we have staff that are able to serve on a county or state, excuse me, regional or state level, I think that was a great, great thing to see. The, on the third, I participated in the pre-meeting for mediation. On the third, I also met with Darren and Josh Hagam in regards to ongoing negotiations. I participated in part of the, part of the day on the mediation on the fourth. On the fifth, met with Matt Jacobson in regards to a series of issues in planning and zoning. Also, met virtually with Dan Molly on a series of issues between the county and the city. That afternoon, we met with Kent Severson with the Environmental Services, talked about their programming there. Yesterday, I met with the Minnesota Department of Deputy Commissioner, that has been covered by Commissioner Eberger, and then there were some additional union negotiations, and also had a meeting with Mr. Melton. Just to note, we have, we have had discussions through our budget process in mandated and non-mandated services. The MACA Committee did ask AMC to provide, to provide some guidance and direction in, in some of the legislative things, both on the state and federal level. Incidentally, we did get that information today, and so I'll be forwarding, forwarding that to, to each of you. It talks about whether it's mandated, either yes or no, whether it's state or federal, and if it has a state statute listed with that, it would provide, provide the actual statute, so. And then, again, of note, we'll be at the AMC Policy Conference Wednesday and Thursday this week, and Friday. That concludes my report.
All right, I just wanna also note that on the third, I did attend that mediation preparation meeting that, that we had, that in preparation for, for all the event the following day. Brian, do you have anything for us? Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was off last Tuesday, so going the previous week, October twenty-sixth, I was involved with the work group session as well, had a meeting with Josh Hagam to discuss upcoming negotiations. On the twenty-seventh, we had the attorney's first negotiations and the correctional officer's second negotiations. On the twenty-eighth, I was at the SWAC meeting, had Corey's evaluation, and attended the PIC meeting. On the third, we had social workers' second negotiations, detox' second negotiations. On the fourth, we had correctional sergeants' second negotiation and highway's second negotiation. On the fifth, basically just updating all the data from the previous union negotiations. And yesterday, we had the deputies' second negotiations. That concludes my report.
Sarah, do you have anything for us? All right, thank you. All right, at this point in time, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session for board discussion pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D dot zero five, subdivision three B for attorney-client privilege.
Mr. Chair.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Baer.
I second.
Second by Commissioner Mojo. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. We are now in closed session. Thank you, Katie. All right, we are now back in session. Our closed session has ended, and with that, our business is done for today, so this meeting is adjourned, and we will hold a, another work group session this afternoon at one-thirty. Meeting adjourned.